Jim Cartman.
No.
John, John Groh. Janie Miller is out?
Yep, Janie Miller is out. I take that back. Jim is here. Jim, you must have popped in. I'm so sorry.
Oh.
Jim is here.
Janie's here?
Nope, Jim is here, Janie's not.
Oh, Jim's here, Janie's not, okay. And Groh is not.
Nope.
Uh, how about my buddy Paul Pangrass?
Nope.
Nope. Lacy Luddy?
No, Lacy, yeah, so right now.
No. And Cindy Wells is excused.
Yep, and we have one guest. We have Joy Franzoli, uh, joining us tonight.
Oh, Joy's gonna be with us.
Hi, girls.
How you doing, honey?
I'm doing good. Good to be here.
Good to hear ya.
Yeah.
Okay, we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six. Sa- six of us. So we do have a quorum.
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, we'll do a, a review and approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Do I have a most? Does anybody read them?
Yeah, this is Matt. I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Thank you, Matt. Second?
Uh, second, I'm Don Crenshaw.
Okay, Don, thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Against? Approved. Okay. Hearing of the public. Is there anybody from the public besides Joy that would like to speak? Seeing there's no public? Okay, we'll move on to communications. Department of Planning and Community Development Report. Overview of Coastal Zone Management and Greenways Program. Joy Franzoli, Program Administrator will now give us her opinion.
Well, thank you, Charles. I appreciate that very much. Um, okay, I would like to start sharing my screen here if I might. Okay. Alright. Alright. Well, I want to say thank you so much for having me this evening. Um, I'm Joy Franzoli. I am the, uh, Program Administrator for the Coastal Program and the County Greenways Program. And I am just tickled to be able to give you a brief overview of, of the two programs that I administer. And poor Matt and, and Jim and, and Russ, they know me well through the, the Coastal Program. So a lot of this is gonna sound real familiar to, to those folks. So I appreciate it very much. So, starting with the Coastal Zone Management Program or CZM Program, um, twenty, the year 2020 marked forty years of this program in partnership with the DEP. They operate, uh, the program out of the Central Office in Harrisburg. So that's who I kind of answer to. Um, believe it or not, Pennsylvania has two coastal zones. We have the Lake Erie Coastal Zone and the Delaware Valley, um, area which, uh, is in the Philadelphia area. And the kind of the three program focused areas of the Coastal Program is, um, that I work on. We provide technical guidance and assistance to our municipalities, uh, and I work with the Northwest Region Office, which is based in Meadville primarily for that. Um, we help administer and guide our municipalities through the Bluff Recession Setback Act, which is a state statute. Uh, and I do that with, with our folks in Meadville, the DEP. And then the other hat that I wear is, uh, I, I serve as the Secretary of our Local Advisory Committee, and it's the Lake Erie Coastal Zone Advisory Committee. Uh, Matt Waldinger and Jim Cartman have been, uh, members and are, are current members of that committee. So I serve as the Secretary of that committee. And keep that group informed and in line. We meet twice a year. Um, and they kind of help inform the program of, of local priorities for our local coastal municipalities. Uh, I also, uh, work to administer that. We have an annual grant program. Uh, it's a, it's a competitive grant program. Uh, I help promote, administer that program and support that program. And I also try to help our municipalities kind of identify, they might have potential projects within their municipality that might be eligible for funding, uh, through the Coastal Program. So I help kind of bridge that gap and can make those connections. So, under the technical guidance and assistance aspect, um, I help to promote, uh, the program priorities within Lake Erie Watershed. And there are essentially three main priorities, the first being public access. Uh, as you can see, kind of the picture that I've shown you, the property owner, I believe, in, in, in Gerard or Lake City, uh, had, had constructed stairs from their bluff down, down to the lake shore. And you can kind of see the type of construction that, that we, that we see. Um, and we really do get out in the field quite a bit to, uh, to meet with property owners in our, in our municipalities to help, you know, enhance and promote public access. Secondly is we want to reduce non-point source pollution. And we do that kind of in part with the county's municipal stormwater assistance program, which, um, many of our, all of our MS4 regulated, um, municipalities do participate. And we also have some that volunteer and they opt to participate, uh, in that program. So we can support our municipalities on stormwater and related erosion issues. And every, every fall, we coordinate the International Coastal Cleanup, which is, which is a, a Erie County-wide cleanup. It usually involves over eight hundred people. We usually pick up over two thousand pounds of trash, uh, and it's, it's a pretty big event, um, every year. And then the third priority is really focusing on coastal hazards and coastal resilience. And a lot of that, uh, we do a lot of field site visits. Uh, we, we visit, um, areas of erosion events. As you, as you know, we had high lake levels, we're having more intense, stronger rain events, wind events, and it's, we are really seeing the effects, um, to our, to our coastal zone. So really focusing on the resilience and coastal hazards is, uh, one of the three of, of the, um, really the big main priorities. And then something else we do is we work with our municipalities on their setbacks and their ordinances, such as their zoning and court code enforcement. We collaborate with those folks and we also work with our municipalities on what permitting requirements might be necessary. Uh, I work in collaboration with the DEP uh, with regard to kind of helping folks understand what the permitting requirements might be. So those are the major points. So the Bluff Recession Setback Act, so why is there a Bluff Recession Program? Um, the house that you're looking at right now is no longer there. That was a house in Gerard Township. Um, and as you can see, there's significant erosion there. They knew that they were living on borrowed time, and so they were able to deconstruct and, and take the house apart um, before it, it went over the bluff. But this is kind of just an example of, of things that we see along the bluff. And we worked very closely with these, with these property owners, and we worked very closely with the, with the municipalities to kind of, you know, whatever technical assistance and whatever permitting and, and really to help these folks decide what they needed to do. So, along with the, the BERSA, um, so of course, erosion and, and recession of the bluff, it's accelerated when lake levels are high, and I'm sure you're all familiar, um, the, the nineteen, the twenty nineteen, last year, well, twenty nineteen wasn't last year, but uh, in twenty nineteen, we, the lake levels exceeded the nineteen eighty-six record, right? So you can see kind of, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but the nineteen eighty-six record was the highest of the, the, the lake level of Lake Erie. Well, in twenty nineteen, thirty-three years later, we beat that record. So you can kind of see on this graph, it kind of looks like a heartbeat. It looks like a heart monitor. So you've got some ups and downs, right? So, not only do we have annual ups and downs, but we also have larger, longer-term ups and downs, like the thirty-year cycle we just went through. And generally, across the Great Lakes, the lake levels are, they're, they're going down. They are receding. So, but this just kind of shows you, when you have high lake levels and intense storms, um, you're gonna have more effects to, to your, to your bluffs and to your coastal zone erosion. So this is just an interesting trend line. You can see, uh, kind of the pattern over the years. And so kind of to really give you, and I really like this diagram because it really shows how the county, how the municipalities and the DEP in the Coastal Resource Management Program, how we work together. You can see kind of the DEP's responsibilities, the program development, the regulatory aspect, guidance and oversight, um, the municipality, um, enforces their code enforcement with the municipal setbacks and setback distances along with their, you know, the permitting, the zoning permits, building permits, that type of thing. But then county, I do a lot of administrative stuff. I do a lot of, uh, reimbursing our municipalities through the Coastal Program. Uh, and I also do a lot of reporting, uh, and administrative things of, of, you know, getting reports and getting invoicing in, uh, that, that type of thing. Um, but then if you look in the middle, you know, we've got technical assistance and surveillance, and that's where we all come together. You know, we, like, the DEP and I work very closely with our municipalities. So I just really like this diagram. Kind of shows you the, the relationship that we have. So, with regard to bluff monitoring, so the picture on the left was taken in, I believe, uh, twenty nineteen, April of twenty nineteen, uh, before the leaves come on the trees. We call it leaf off-season. Um, that was April. We, uh, the DEP contracts with the Pennsylvania State Police. And I was, I was fortunate enough to be able to do the helicopter monitoring in April of twenty nineteen. We could not do it last year due to COVID. Uh, but we went from the New York line to the Ohio line and back to the, to the airport, and it took about an hour. But we just continually snapped pictures. And so you have that bird's eye view, literally, uh, of, of the bluff, um, from county to county line, um, without the leaves on the tree. So you can really see what, what's happening. And, and then in the spring, you can see kind of what damages may have, may have gotten worse over the winter. So, and then in the summertime, you can see the picture on the right. Y'all might recognize the gentleman in that picture as Mr. Don Benzakowski. He retired last September. So, oh, he's retired, uh, but I think he's relocated back to Erie. So I don't think we've lost him completely yet. But we usually do boat surveillance, um, during the summer months, and we work with each municipal zoning officer, code enforcement officer, and we take them on the boat with us. Uh, and we monitor the coastline by boat. So we can get another, another aspect, another view, if you will, of, of the, um, of what's going on. Maybe, you know, somebody put in steps to the beach without a permit, you know, maybe there's, there's some damage that, that, you know, we really needed to address. So it's kind of a neat way to just keep our, keep tabs on things. And coming soon, um, some of our municipal officials have kayaks, and they joked with Shelby Clark and I of the DEP about maybe going out in our kayaks and doing like a paddle to, to maybe, you know, check out some of the local municipal, uh, shoreline. And so something that we're considering doing with, uh, with our municipal officials who are up for it. So, following along is still with the Bluff Recession Setback Act. So what we do, we do control point monitoring. It's a two-year cycle. So every two years, we cover the west portion of the county, and then the next two-year cycle, it's the east portion of the county, with essentially Prescott Isle being the middle, the midsection. So, there are one hundred and thirty control points every three tenths of a mile from New York line to Ohio line. And it's a, it's a buried piece of rebar, essentially, that we find with a metal detector. We have measurements, uh, so it never moves. And then we measure to a particular point. We use a compass bearing, and we measure to the same point on, on the bluff every year, or every cycle, rather, to see how active that bluff is. So if you look at the picture on the left, that is actually at Shades Beach. It's, it's just east of Shades Beach Park. You have to cross the stream and climb up a hillside to get to it. But you can see the tree that's barely hanging over, um, and, and it's very, very undercut. There's actually a control point there. And we pretty much have to crawl on our hands and knees to make sure that we, that we safely get to that control point. So that's, uh, that's getting pretty precarious, but one of the fun things I get to do. Um, and then responding to field site, you know, field site visits, we get, um, concerned property owners. We get people that are looking to purchase property. You can see here, um, the picture on the right, that was kind of the perfect, that was the Halloween or Thanksgiving storm of twenty nineteen in Northeast Township. Was the perfect storm of high lake levels. It was a gale, it was a seiche event, essentially. Uh, it was high winds, high lake levels. And the temperature dropped from sixty degrees to thirty degrees, like, within that, that day. And so that's, that's the kind of damage that, that we respond to and that we see. And then we can talk to the property owner about, um, what, what they might be able to do and what permits might, might be required to, to, you know, can repair, make those repairs. So, some of the things that we get to do in the Coastal Program. That was the Coastal Program. I know I went through that pretty quickly, um, but happy to talk to anyone who might have questions, uh, afterwards or in later time. So, switching to the Greenways Program. So, the Greenways Program is funded through Act thirteen. And essentially, those are Marcellus Legacy Funds, um, that fund the position to, um, you know, promote greenways, trails, parks and recreation. So I think you might be, some of you might be aware, between twenty thirteen and twenty thirteen, seventeen, the Greenways Program, uh, conducted an annual competitive grant program. And over that time, we funded and supported about thirty-six projects. Um, and we still have one open. We're working with, um, City of Corey for their Mead Park. They're, they're doing Mead Park planning. So between matching fund delays and COVID, uh, we're, we're, we still have not yet closed on that, uh, the books on that project yet, but uh, we're getting close to the end there. So, then in twenty seventeen, um, the Greenways Program decided that they needed to look at how these funds were being uh, focused. And they initiated, and this was before my time. I came on board with the county in June of twenty eighteen. So I've been with the county for just, almost just exactly three years now. Uh, so, in twenty seventeen, the Parks, Trails and Recreation Plan, uh, was initiated to be a countywide plan, uh, to look at all of our municipalities and, and looking at really a countywide, uh, look at, uh, parks, trails and recreation for the county. And that plan, as some of you know, was adopted into the County Comprehensive Plan, um, in July of twenty twenty. So with the adoption of that plan, now we are starting to move forward and starting to initiate some, some projects. Um, and really starting to get started with, with Greenways again. So, since the plan was, um, adopted, we are looking to, um, we've received support from the DCNR for a peer review. Uh, and I'm gonna go through each, each of these four bullet points separately as well to give you a little more information. But uh, we're looking into the feasibility of creating a Parks and Recreation Coordinator position to help us implement this plan. We really need uh, an individual who's going to be a rock star, who's going to really take this plan and, and, and guide the, the implementation of it. Something else we're working on is, uh, the Erie to Pittsburgh Trail Alliance. Uh, it's the Erie to Pittsburgh Trail. Uh, and so we've been working with that group to establish, we're calling it Mile Zero, or the, the Northern Terminus, the northern endpoint of that trail. And we've worked with the city, uh, and the Port Authority to establish that. And I'll get into that in a second. And we're, we're doing all four of these things, um, at the same time, by the way. So, a lot of stuff going on, but it's all really, it's, it's good. Um, at the same time, we're also looking at, uh, a realignment of the Erie to Pittsburgh Trail through Erie County, looking at a route north from the City of Corey to connect to Erie's Bayfront. Uh, so that's, that's happening right now as well. And then finally, Erie, Pennsylvania is hosting an in-person statewide summit this fall, um, September nineteenth through twenty-first. That's Sunday through Tuesday, uh, in Erie, PA. We're having a statewide summit. And what I have to, what I have to tell you about that is, uh, before Honey Stempka ever came to the Planning Department, she initiated that. Honey was with Environment Erie and, you know, put in a proposal to the statewide organization to, to, um, we put in a bid to host, to be a host city. And it was right when I first started at the county. I got an email from Honey, and she says, "Joy, we need you to work on, like, we need you to be involved in this." And I said, "I don't know what I'm saying yes to, but yes, I'm, I'm doing it. Whatever you need me to do, I'm doing it." So, that has since followed Honey, uh, to, to the Planning Department, which is really just kind of a neat sequence of events.
Well, I will, I will step in here to say, thankfully, Joy was able to take over primary, primary duties as kind of the main convener and coordinator of planning this, um, just with all of the, the things that I need to be responsible for with the department. I had to kind of step aside from being the, like, the main, uh, what would you call it, ringmaster?
Ringmaster is good.
And Joy has, has become that, that person. Um, and so she's working with a whole host of people across the entire state as well as locally to make this conference happen in September. And it's gonna be amazing. Um, so think about, uh, your municipal staff, for those of you that have them, that connect into Greenways, um, and encourage them to attend, uh, the conference.
Absolutely, absolutely. That, yeah, thank you so much for that. Um, so, thinking about the first, so here on the, on the, on the left, this may look familiar to some folks. This is the front cover of the Parks, Trails and Recreation Plan, which is living on the county website. Um, so with that, you can see to the right there. So one of the goals, um, of that plan is building the human capacity needed to implement the Parks, Trails and Recreation Plan. So under goal two, task two point one is create a Parks and Rec Coordinator position. Um, it'll be a great start toward building the human capacity. So, that's where the DCNR peer review came in. We, we applied to the DCNR for a peer-to-peer to, to initiate a feasibility study. Like, what would it take to support this type of position? Um, you know, where would the person, you know, would it be a, a Planning Department position? Where, you know, where would this person be housed? Um, and what would it take to fund a sustainable funding system or a sustainable funding stream to, to, to support this position? So we, we're really just kicking this off, uh, now. Um, and, and you can see below, I'm not gonna read everything to you, but that bulleted list, really, the, the Parks and Rec Coordinator will support, uh, will provide support for, uh, the, the Parks Commissioner Authority and the Recreation Districts, which is another kind of the overarching governance structure. So we really want to put together, um, a, a pretty significant structure and have this individual help guide and, and implement that. So a lot of things, um, on that bulleted list there that we really want to do to help our municipalities. So that's like the first step, um, to, to implementing this plan. So with regard to Erie to Pittsburgh Trail, the establishment of Mile Zero, I wanted to share, these are renderings. Um, you might recognize that as Dobbins Landing. Um, and looking at where the three flagpoles are currently, uh, these, these images, the renderings are, are done by Dahl Kemper Landscape Architects. The, the Port Authority works with them, and the Port Authority said, "We want them to do this work." And so you can kind of see the rendering there. They're gonna give up a, a parking space or two. Um, and you can kind of see, um, you know, they're looking at bike racks. They're looking at some natural paving stones for benches, some native uh, hardy, uh, native grasses and plants and flowers to withstand the harshness that takes place in the wintertime. Um, so you can kind of see the renderings there, the bird's eye view, and then kind of the, the ground level view of what, what, we really want to make this an inviting place, uh, for the trail users. And then the medallion, you can see kind of in the top right, um, Franklin Bronze is working on this medallion. Uh, it is very specific to, to Erie. That is the Brig Niagara. That is an accurate depiction of the Brig Niagara. You can see kind of the bicycle spoke or wheel, um, gear inside, and then Mile Zero with Erie, Pennsylvania. And that is gonna be, I don't know if you can see the little medallion right in the circle here. So that's gonna be our, our, our draw to, to Erie. So, excited. And we really want to get this done by the summit this September. And if we can raise the funds, when we raise the funds, um, we really want to get this done because Dahl Kemper basically said that they can have this, they can have it completed in like two to three weeks. So we really want to have this wonderful statewide conference and have this to show off. So that's, that's exciting. That's exciting stuff. And thinking about the realignment. So here on the right, that is the Erie to Pittsburgh Trail. And you can see by the colored segments, some are on-road. Uh, the green, uh, the green parts are the open trail, developed and undeveloped, like some, um, different multi-surface. But then the red spots are the gaps. And so, uh, looking over to your left, I've zoomed in essentially on the northern portion. So you can kind of see, um, where you see the word Section Eight. We want to connect like Section Eight to Section Two or Section One. We want to kind of find that route through Erie County. Go north through Erie County. You know, past Union City, through Waterford, um, we kind of have an idea in mind. But we really want to make that connection, um, and not abandon the Chautauqua uh, county, but kind of make that as a spur. We really want to bring folks up through Erie County to connect them. So what we're doing right now is we are looking at conducting a feasibility study. What's it gonna take? Um, where are the potential routes? Who are we gonna have to, we're gonna have to work with the railroad, you know, how, what's this gonna take for us to get this done? So where we are with that is we have, we have drafted an RFP, uh, for consulting services. So we have an RFP drafted. We have, um, we need the funding to do it first, though. So we have, um, submitted an application to ARC, the Application Regional Commission. And I have to say, Melinda Meyer is the grant writer for Erie County, and she has been, she has been wonderful with, with, you know, submitting the application to the DCNR for the peer review, and, and she's submitted the application for, for the funding for this feasibility study. So uh, we are hopeful that that funding will be received and that we will be able to release that RFP and, um, get the ball rolling on how to connect these dots through Erie County.
Joy, can I mention something? Can you go back to that slide for a moment?
Yeah, sure.
I was looking at this and realized, um, this, uh, becomes, uh, more powerful, I guess, or more interesting for a couple of reasons. One is that Crawford County did receive funding, a significant multi-millions of dollars of funding, um, through the Appalachian Regional Commission to complete their missing sections of trail. So if you look at the map on the right, um, Section Twelve and Section Fourteen, um, over the next, I don't remember how many years they have to do it, uh, but I don't think it's very long. I think it's a pretty short window to spend those funds. Um, but that would be an entire section completed. And, um, I'm just thinking about, uh, when we do, do the, uh, our section of Corey to Erie, what a nice loop will be through Erie and Chautauqua for you cyclists in the region. And Russ, back to our conversation earlier today, when we were talking about tourism and northeast. Imagine the draw of stay in northeast and bike an entire giant loop. Um, I mean, I don't know how many miles that'll end up being, because I think there's, what did I map? Thirty-five miles in Erie County potentially? Maybe forty, something like that. Um, but connecting that up through Chautauqua, that'll be a nice draw um, for northeast particularly. But of course, the entire county will benefit from that as well.
Thank you. I wasn't even thinking about that. So, yes, and thank you for mentioning that. And these maps, I took them right from the PEC, the Pennsylvania Environmental Council, their gap assessment report. So that's where these came from. But yeah, very true. Drinking wine and riding your bicycle, Russ. I can see it now. So, and lastly, um, the twenty twenty-one PA Greenways and Trail Summit is going to be in Erie this fall. I attended the twenty nineteen summit in Shippensburg, where I presented, um, kind of our county story of, of the Parks, Trails and Recreation Plan. Um, so I'm gonna promote this. Um, the, so to the right is kind of the postcard. That is the blue, green and everything in between, connecting Pennsylvania's land and water trails. I believe that, Honey, I think you came up with that. I think that was yours.
I think I did, yeah.
Yep, yep. So, and really, we want to make it unique. Erie has the water features and, and, and the, and the trail features. So that's why we wanted to connect the blue and the green. Um, so the county executive is kicking this off, essentially. She is holding her annual ride around Erie County that Friday. And the summit kicks off on Sunday with the mobile workshops. Um, so we thought, well, hey, we'll get people to Erie to ride their, you know, ride on Sat- on Friday, stay the weekend, and then, you know, kick off with, with the, uh, the summit on Sunday. Um, there are mobile sessions on Sunday. Uh, and then just to, the, the keynote speaker is a gentleman by the name of Fred Tutman. He's, uh, the Patoxent Riverkeeper. Oh, he's Maryland, not too far south of Washington DC. He's an African-American gentleman. Um, essentially, the theme is, uh, you know, gonna be diversity, equity and inclusion on our trails, making it equitable and inclusive to everyone. So that's gonna be his, and he's also agreed to speak on a panel, as well as his address, his keynote speech. Um, and he's really excited about this. He said yes a long time ago. So he's very excited, uh, to be doing this with us. Um, sponsorship opportunities are available. I have the website there, um, for very, there, there are, you know, two hundred and fifty-dollar sponsorships up to the five thousand dollar level. So there's lots of different sponsorship opportunities. Um, kind of the bottom right there, I've kind of just given you a little screenshot of who our partners are and who our current, you know, who, who our current sponsors and, and partners are uh, in, for the summit. Um, pretty, pretty impressive group of people. Um, pretty, pretty impressive group of people. Uh, registration opens June first, and we are completely following COVID safety protocols. It's going to be at the Bayfront Convention Center. Um, so plenty of space. Um, and so we are very confident, uh, that, and the Bigfoot Convention Center is, is really taking this seriously. So we have no concerns, uh, about any safety protocols there. Volunteer opportunities are coming soon. So keep in mind sponsorship opportunities, volunteer opportunities as well. And then just generally, for any other information about the summit, I, I placed the website there. Um, and if you just Google Greenways and Trails Summit, um, it'll pop up as well. So a lot of things going on, um, in Erie County for the, for the, uh, Greenways and Trails and, and, um, the coastal program. So that was a lot.
Be sure to send these slides, uh, to everyone, so those links are available. And Charles, uh, will, will get those to you as well.
Yep, yes, so thank you very, very much, appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, Joy. That was a very, very impressive, uh, documentation of the, uh, two main things you came to tell us about. We thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions? Questions? Yeah, hey, definitely.
Hi, Joy. This is Lisa Austin here. Hey, this is just incredible what you're doing, and it's just years and years of work by so many people. And I'm just really thrilled to see the, um, the long-range plans here. I, I had a, I had one, a couple of questions actually, but one in particular. When you mentioned, uh, the, um, the, the three program priorities in the watershed, one being access, which is so exciting, and the history of the Sons of Lake Erie and what they've already done here is, is magnificent. It's great to see you building on that. And then the second one, um, was, uh, pollution reduction non-point. And so I, I'm assuming that means pollution that's coming from somewhere else, rather than the water's edge. And so if that's the case, is there a separate? I mean, why isn't there one for pollution at the water's edge? Or am I just misunderstanding the, the terminology?
Well, that's a great question. So essentially, you have point source pollution, which is like a pipe, like a discharge pipe where you're like, all right, that's where it's coming from. You can pinpoint that source.
Okay.
But non-point source pollution can be like runoff from a parking lot that's got antifreeze and grease and oil. Um, so, or, or, or agricultural, like fertilizers and thi- things that are running off, things that you really can't pinpoint where it's coming from. And like, think about like stormwater. The rain falls and it picks up stuff and just washes it, whether it's litter, trash, chemicals. Do, does that make sense?
Yes, it makes perfect sense. Now, I understand, so like, for instance, if there was a business that was discharging sewage that you have, that would be point. And then otherwise, almost everything else, it sort of gets there. So, so you gave us the example, um, runoff, say, from a parking lot. Would that be true also of any kind of impervious surface or roadway? Would those also be part of the pollution? I mean, is that a, a source of, uh, pollution as well?
Yeah, certainly, yeah, certainly. And, you know, anything, again, if there's a spill, um, or, you know, any automotive leakages or whatever, you know, anything off a roadway, a parking lot, anything that can get picked up and washed away, um, that doesn't really necessarily can't be pinpointed, yeah, that, that's pollution.
Okay, so, so I just was wondering then, is the, uh, so the coastal, I, I don't know, I, I came in and I didn't write down the title of your job, but I, I know you mentioned the Lake Erie Coastal Zone Advisory Committee, and several members of this group were part of that. And I'm just wondering, d- does the group that you work for specifically for, or did the Lake Erie Coastal Zone Advisory take any kind of concern about the plans to expand the roadway along the waterfront, uh, the, the PennDOT plan?
The advisory committee, um, did not necessarily address, like, that did not come before the committee. Um, essentially, you know, the, the committee will look at, um, like local, like local priorities, but that, because the bayfront is, it's, it's a state, it's PennDOT, um, there are folks at the DEP that deal specifically with that. So like, I can tell you, Matt Walderon, he does the federal, the federal consistency reviews. So that kind of goes up the food chain, so to speak. So the local advisory committee, um, you know, did not, we, we look at things with an individual with, within the municipalities. The, the advisory committee is comprised of, you know, municipal members and then, and then interest group members. So we really focus on individual municipalities.
So, so Joy, are you saying though, and I understanding that there was never a discussion at the local level about PennDOT's proposal? Is that, is that an accurate interpretation or?
There was, but a separate group addressed that. Like, the, 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 the correct people at the DEP, not necessarily my local coastal zone advisory committee, but there were other coastal, um, coastal compliance or coastal consistency folks that did look at it.
So, so, so there, but there were, there was no one local then who was part of that review?
No, no, not from the local advisory committee.
Okay, um, um.
And, and, and every, at every meeting, we, we do open the floor and we, you know, everyone can give an update, we, you know, if anyone wanted to bring it up for discussion, they could.
But, yeah, that, that's good to know. I think that it's, um, that, um, it's unclear when people are concerned about things like where to go and actually be heard. And so, um, anyway, it just seems like you're doing, all, all the work you're doing is so amazing. It seems like, uh, it would be a logical fit for this group and the expertise that's been compiled there to sort of weigh in on the idea of creating a, um, roadway expansion that's going to help double traffic and create impervious surfaces and limit, you know, the access to the waterfront, nor noise and all that. Anyway, I was just, I, 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 um, does, has that come up anywhere else? Ever a roadway along a waterfront or a parking lot along a waterfront? Has that been part of the conversation with your groups?
I am sure that Philadelphia has dealt with something like that. Yeah, I'm sure Philly, because Philly's a much larger area, but, um, I'm just, I'm trying to think in my limited amount of time with the coastal program, I, not, not in my experience.
Okay, good. The, um, the Veterans Hospital on the, um, East Side Town, I know that years ago, they had, they're within the waterfront air zoning, or, and they were supposed to plant trees if they ever did a parking lot. And then the person who was in charge of it didn't do it. And anyway, is, does that fall into your discussion, discretion as well? Or is that a separate city issue?
Well, the city is represented on the advisory committee. So we do have representative of, of the city on the advisory committee.
Well, it's very exciting. Thank you for answering my questions.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, I appreciate it.
Okay, is there any other questions? No, me and none, thank you, Joy.
Uh, thank you, Charles, I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thanks for joining us, Joy.
Okay, we're moving on then.
Thank you.
Let's go to commissioner reports. Anybody, any commissioner would like to?
Can I, can I finish up the, uh, can I finish up just a couple of things with the planning, uh, with planning department?
Oh, sure, sure, go ahead, Honey.
Couple of quick bullet points. Um, we have officially, um, kicked off the Northeast, uh, comprehensive plan. We've had a couple of meetings so far with Northeast Township and Northeast Borough, and we're really, we're really looking forward to, um, working with, with them. So that's, that is starting, we are diving right into that one. No rest for John McGrainer, at all. Um, and then I know many of you are aware, um, but for those of you that aren't, the Long Range Transportation Plan Update, um, kick, kicked off. The survey is out. Um, that was released, I think, on the twenty-seventh of April. So that's also something, many of you already have the links to the survey and, and whatnot, but we'll be sure in our notes to include links to the Long Range Transportation Plan Update Survey. So you can complete it, you can share it with your, um, people that you work with or people that you live by. The more input we get into this, the better, um, for Erie County. Um, so encouraging everyone to participate and then share it with others so that they too can participate. So, that's all I have, Charles.
Oh, okay. That was, uh, more information, thank you. Uh, how about, uh, Commissioner Matt Waldinger, you got anything?
Uh, I don't have a whole lot. I just have a, uh, nothing really new, just some updates to stuff I've presented in the past, just to say things are moving along. We did kick off our Gateway to Prescott Isle District, um, plan with our, our consultant, Ingalls Planning and Design. And, um, he's getting started and he's going to start stakeholder and regional municipal reachouts probably, probably late this month or early in June. Um, and then, uh, we do have our RACP, uh, application for West A Street in the pipeline. And we've gotten a lot of, um, feedback and comments from the public. We appreciate that a, a lot of people have taken time to write to, uh, the Department of Community and Economic Development on that project's behalf, so we appreciate that. And, uh, we had our final public hearing for our official map at the supervisors' meeting on May eleventh, and their intention is to adopt that on May twenty-fifth. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Lisa, would you like to speak now, or you want to wait till, uh, to the, uh, Bayfront Convention lawsuit discussion is on?
She, um, she put a note that she, uh, did not have a report for this month to us, so.
All right, how about Dawn? Anything, Dawn?
Nope, we're all good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the only thing I want to say is, uh, I'm glad we finally, uh, got into a really decent sea season here. And, uh, you know, it's nice to be able to walk around outside in the sun. That's all I got to say, so there, there we go. Hello, Russ, are you there?
Sure, yes, I am, uh, Charlie. I, I, uh, I'll piggyback off of what you just said. I walked into a hardware store the other day without a mask on, and I felt like a rebel. So I just, so it'd, it'd be nice to get rid of those things, get back to normal. It, it feels like out in Northeast, it's been held back. But I don't know how you guys all feel in your areas, but it feels like we're going to pick up here pretty quick once things settle down and lumber prices maybe come down. Um, after what Honey said about us working on the, the, the comprehensive plan, we are pretty excited out here to get going on it. Also, a lot of opportunities coming out here. It really seems like we could be busting out great soon, and, uh, we're looking forward to it. Seems like we had a lot of interest, a lot of people that are into helping us with it.
Yeah, that's what's going to make it really great, I just, the, the wide variety of support, um, the people you have participating is going to be great.
Thanks, Charlie.
Okay, how about Jim Cardman? You got anything, Jim? Is he here?
Yep, he's on mute, but he's here. I'm not sure, he's giving us hand gestures, and I don't exactly know what they mean.
Uh-oh.
Kind of chicken dance like? No, no, none of, none of that.
Uh, okay.
No, no, is that no report, Jim?
I guess.
He can't do anything, something is wrong. His phone is not working, I think is what he said.
Oh.
That is what he said. So he has no report, unless he wants to type it into the chat box.
Okay, and, uh, there's nobody else, uh, left on the list that I can see.
Nope, no one else is here.
Lacy didn't, uh, didn't, isn't on, is she?
No, no, no one else is joined.
Okay, uh, move on to, uh, yeah, adoption of the bylaws.
I have a little update.
Oh, you got an update?
I have a little update, uh, in that council has finally reviewed the administrative code, and it's coming back to the administration, for the administration to review council's comments and potential changes. So it's moved a little further, um, but it hasn't been, um, adopted yet by council, but we're getting closer, so maybe by the end of the year.
We can live with it or without it, doesn't matter anymore, I don't think.
I know, I mean, yeah, we just need to align our bylaws, uh, to what the administrative code says. That's all we're waiting for, so.
Well, it's a good idea to have bylaws, you know, just in case something crops up that we have to go and look at them.
Yep, we have them, we just, you know, we'd like them to align with everything else.
Okay, so we're not going to do nothing with this Bayfront Quarter lawsuit discussion?
Um, I will leave that, uh, Lisa was the one that requested that to be.
Yeah, the, I think that, um, I would like to delay that till we have more of the population there. And, um, there's frankly not a lot to, to report right now. But part of the motivation in requesting that was to understand a little more about the decision that the group made in my absence to, um, su- to, to support the, um, the, to, to encourage city council to, uh, allow PennDOT to proceed. And then the subsequent, um, lawsuit is not necessarily against the highway, it's against the failure to follow the procedure. And so it's still in court, I mean, it's still working, it's sort of through the system. But I, I personally think it's almost seven o'clock. I think we should leave this to a, um, a future date when there's less on the schedule. And nobody, I don't want, it's time to go out and look at the sun or what's left of it.
All right, well, then we'll.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Uh, being as, that is going to be delayed, so we'll go to, there is no new business, I don't imagine.
Nope.
So with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, Lisa's second.
Everybody wants a second.
Yes.
Okay, it's seconds, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aga- against? None?
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Thank you, thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for participating. I really enjoy having a quorum since, since the old days, when we only had three or four people on, on board. So thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thanks, Charles.
Thank you, Charles, take care.
That's about it. Bye-bye.
Good night.